Good evening to the Board of Selectmen, regular meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. I will open the meeting at 6:00 PM. For those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty just as for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next line for the Board of Selectmen's agenda to approve warrants. WR 25-10 payables. PR 25-09 payroll. What would the Board like to do with that?
I'll make a motion to pay WR 25-10 payables and PR 25-09 payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Public session. Do we have anybody for public session tonight? Nobody? No? Then we will continue. Board of Health vacancy. There's an appointment, hopefully coming, for a recommendation and a vote.
We would like to recommend.
Did you say your name first?
Oh, sorry, Sue Colette, Board of Health.
Thank you.
Numbering Tree Road. We'd like to recommend Jessica at Gattulis. She's on Gray Oaks Lane.
Gattulis?
Yes, she's on Gray Oaks Lane. The third seat, which I guess is temporary appointment till 2025, and then if she wants to stay on.
Then it would have to go on the ballot at the next town elections for the remaining of the term, which would be two years.
Okay.
She's very well qualified, and so I think, I don't know what the next steps are. We just want to recommend her.
And then the Board will decide.
Okay, and I can attest that she is very well qualified. I have met her a few times, so I don't hesitate, and her husband is also on the Wetlands Board. So they're very concerned about anything like that, so I would give my support to her being nominated and appointed. Any other comments from the Board?
Clarify the term again.
Board of Selectmen. I'm sorry. For Jessica, it's for the Board of Health.
It would it would be from now or from when the appointment till June 30th of 2025? Or actually until town elections, excuse me, till town elections, which would be May.
May of 2025.
Yes, May 19th, I believe, is our next town election.
I think so.
And there, if she would want to, or anybody at that point can run for the remaining term of the three years, which would be for two more years.
Lucy, I'll let you make the motion, because I don't think I could pronounce her last name.
Gattulis.
Gattulis. What was her first name?
Jessica.
Jessica.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jessica Gattulis.
Member of the Board of Health.
As to Board of Health through town elections in May. And I guess we'll just leave it at that. Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the next?
She'll just have to go to the town clerk next time she's available, either this Friday or next Monday, and just get someone in with the town clerk.
Okay, so we can email her and get in touch with her.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, she's all set.
Great, thank you.
Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. We are going to review and possibly sign the 2025 retail license renewals after we vote for them.
Yes. The retail license renewals are for Agronomy Farm Vineyard for wines. Root 148 Package and Variety for a full license. Golfer's Arm, full license. Pine Acres Lodge, full license. And Okampine Acres, which is the store inside the campground, wines and malt. The fees for the full licenses are $3.55. The others for Agronomy and the store at Pine Acres is $2.05. I've confirmed with the treasurer, all the taxes are up to date. And this is just for the renewal certification for 2025 that goes to A, B, C, C. No one's been no one's been revoked or possibly denied unless the Board has reasons. And then the Board just has to sign, acknowledging that there's nothing listed. These are the licenses.
Make the motion that we approve the license for Agronomy Farm Vineyard. Category wines only. 148 Package and Variety, all alcoholic beverages. Golfer's Arms, all alcoholic beverages. Now, was that one also a pouring license? Should be. Is that different? No.
Because Agronomy is a pouring, too.
Yeah, and Pine Acres is all alcoholic beverages and wines and malt. That's why I wondered if there was a difference. Okay.
What would the Board like to do?
Second.
That was my motion.
I know. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I just want to report to the Board, too, that I did, there was two Class II renewals that were sent out. I did receive the one from Okamp Trailer Sales and Services. Mr. Stellato is still pending, which I have not heard back from breakaway. The deadline on my notice was November 8th. Granted, we have until the end of the year, but only one pending, and that's just for Class II.
I'll take that.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Did you want to see them?
Hit the bell.
Can you get it? They'll all be notified? Or they've.
Yes, at a future meeting before the end of the year, I'll have the printed cards for you guys to sign, as well as the Class IIs. I'm just giving breakaway a little time, seeing that we're early. But yeah.
Okay, next item is the ARPA updates. According to figures, we have received that we have had a grand total of $565,852.99. And our balance available is $19,107.1. We still have allocations that are pending. They all have contracts and ready to go whenever they are able to, but we need those contracts by December 30th, and these are the ones that we already have. Cable Internet, Green Hollow Cemetery Arch, Actuarial Study, Town Hall Painting, VEDAR Software, and Skyline Drive. Any comments?
Maribel was going to look into getting the side door fixed. We thought we'd use ARPA, but we don't have any posts. Because it doesn't stay locked.
Do we need to have the front door fixed?
Well, let's as of tonight.
We're having trouble with that door all stuck.
Before I go home, I'll see if it's.
There is a rod that comes down on the right-hand side.
There is.
With the two, maybe it's just not connecting.
Could be, because I think it goes into the.
It should.
To lock it. Yeah. But somebody came in and said it was open. They found it open.
It's been open a couple of times.
Today, so.
Because I came down the other day to close it, and then today Ellie came in and saw that it was open. So.
So I'll check it out. We get somebody to come out to look at this side door. If that one's a mess, we'll have
I know that I.
Do them both at once, maybe, yeah.
I had reached out to Scott.
Yeah.
And he was gonna come out and look at that door. I just emailed him today, asking if he ever got a chance, because if not, then he can possibly look at both of them, yeah. Also, if I may, just for consideration or thought for the Board, there are a few pending invoices that maybe be beneficial to take from ARPA. I know we have $335.80 that has been lingering for quite some time, since probably before the former Highway Superintendent retired from the Verizon fiasco mess that's been going on.
Cell phone.
Cell phone, yeah.
Yeah.
I know that the former Highway Superintendent and I spent several hours trying to figure this out, when his phone would get disconnected, because payments were going to wrong accounts within the town, but still wrong accounts, so maybe something to consider, just it has to get paid one way or another, and it's $335.80, so that one's for consideration or suggestion. Then there's another one from Verizon and National Grid that I tried to encumber at the end of the year, but we did not have enough funds in the accounts to encumber. So they were going to be held for special town meeting, but it might be, oh, and a Spectrum one that was post prior to my time here, that's just been carrying forward a balance. So the Verizon is $125.36, that's for our fax line. National Grid, $227.93, and Spectrum, $219.96, for a total of $573.25. So that could be possibly considered. And then the big one was for Maya. These were extra that was added, not from our premium, but just from the town building assessments from last year. And when those went up, the assessment went up, and then it gets allocated to the next years. So it's not necessarily that the premium quote was wrong, in that sense, it's just this is the extra to catch it up, yeah. And that's for $4,572. If all those are considered, it would be a total of, I believe, $5,145.58.
Let me confirm my math here. Any discussions?
Most of these are a couple of years old.
Some are.
Yeah.
Everything has to be finished up.
Yeah, I think I would rather pay it out of ARPA, because we're running out of time with that. Nineteen.
Oh, wait, I might be wrong with my total.
$19,107.
Standby.
Take it out of there. Just to clear these up.
Every time I do it, it's different.
I know that feeling.
Come on now. And my phone updated, so the calculator is much different. Let's see. I guess my original number fits right. Sorry. We're all off a little bit.
$5,145.58.
And it's, and this is going to be going forward or currently owed?
This is.
Because of the new assessments.
Currently owed, yes.
Okay. So do you want the motion individually or as a lump for all three? All right, so the motion is going to be for $5,145.58 from ARPA, and that's going to be for the insurance on the town buildings. And then a a Verizon bill going to the
Cracks.
The Cracks.
Yeah, that's the Cracks.
And then for the Verizon also for the cell phone
And National Grid.
And National Grid and Spectrum.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that'll bring us down, we're about roughly $14,000 remaining.
Does the Board want to continue with the allocations of the $19.50 for Skyline Drive for legal or return that to free cash? Or kind of hold off still?
That was the number we voted to.
Right.
But now it looks like we're kind of we get a response today as far as the deeds.
Leave it in the meantime.
Always add it in a future agenda.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, and one more thing. I did receive this from Harold last week. It was a quote for $3,250 from Perusal Pavement for the playground at the school for the cracks, and it would fill in cracks with the asphalt and then seal cracks with hot rubber. So I think that this would be a shorter-term solution.
Just an interim safety repair, so.
But I mean, right now, they wouldn't probably be doing it anytime soon now with the cold weather.
It's too cold.
It's too cold. Or it could be something that could fully be done and put it as an article for the future. I don't know. Something to consider.
More work needs to be done than, right?
That was just the.
Is that the pictures they showed us with the broken pieces?
I went up and looked at it, and it is the original parking lot for the original part of the school. And there's some gaps this wide in the playground on that asphalt surface. I question whether we should try and do a temporary repair, even though it is cold. Just so nobody twists an ankle up there or something. From the liability side of it. But I don't know whether the you know, the weather's going to cooperate by the time you get it scheduled, it could be snowing.
Yeah, and I know that.
So it's kind of a.
Yeah. See if they want to do it that way. Because it's it's going to be touching to do.
Well, and looking at the walks up there and stuff, too, there's, there is a little bit more work than.
There's a lot more. That's why I'm thinking capital.
Right. No, I agree.
So you're thinking special town meeting or annual town meeting? Just because then I would have to make sure that the school is aware to get quotes. And then if the special town meeting is in January, to make sure that they could still.
They threw out a rough, and it wasn't based on actual quotes of quite a bit to do that.
They put out what they thought might be somewhere around $50,000.
Right. And, but they said, let us know, and we will get you know, a better handle on it.
Well, I would say get the exact.
Yeah, exactly.
For the article.
Yeah, I can contact Kevin, but then, you know, if it is going to be over $50,000, well, if one is under 50, then we were, they would be safe on the procurement aspect like that. But if everything's 50 plus, then that would require those seal bids, but the school will do that.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, that would be all of them.
For the discussion? No? Okay, good. The town hall Wi-Fi. All of us that use Wi-fis over here, we have a special password for the town hall Wi-Fi. We are being suggested, because of all this cybersecurity coming out, that we change our password because so many people have it. For example, when they come to the Wetlands Commission, some of our people bring their computers with them, they open them up, then they need the Wi-Fi password. And so it has been considered for us to think about getting a visitor's Wi-Fi number so that those people can have a visitor one while the ones in town or that do town work in their computers at the town hall and highway police station and like that, that they will have the actual town hall password.
That comes with a cost of a one-time fee of about $400 to $500.
Yeah, I was gonna say about five.
Is that from B I T?
Yes.
Yeah.
So Paul had given me an estimate of 400 months ago. But to be safe, you know, he's like, let's bump, until we get the right quote, you know, if the Board wanted to allocate that to ARPA or anything, you know, say up to 500. And again, to reiterate what Lucy said, it is to change the password for anyone who has access to the town hall. The secured one would be for anyone who works here. Everybody else that wants to have free access to Wi-Fi, it will be unsecured.
Like a guest.
A guest.
Guest, yeah.
So they can automatically log in, don't need a a passcode to get in, but all the computers internally need that code to get in. So it's recommended to make one or two people know the passcode and kind of register all the computers or laptops that are used for the town, so that way it's not, the password isn't being given and to avoid the same thing.
It's a one-time fee.
Yes.
Yeah.
You have the exact quote, you don't.
No, it's, I don't have the exact quote. It would, it could be an allocation of up to 500, and then we can return the rest, or do you want to wait until the next meeting to get an exact quote?
Should probably go with the exact number, right? Just so we're not short and have to do it.
I was just gonna think accounting-wise, yeah.
Yeah. We'll hear about it if we don't.
Yeah, get the exact number. Pipe's.
It should be. After last year.
Was that last year or the year before?
It seems like it was last year.
I think it was the year before, though, right?
Could have been. Social media policy review and Facebook. Those, our social media policy was given to each of us last time. Has everyone had a chance to look it over? Make some comments, some changes, some other ideas? Well, I would think that if we wanted to make changes, we would have to send it back for revision by legal counsel. We don't want to impinge on anybody's right to free speech.
That policy was written after the Westboro Supreme Court case.
Oh.
So that's up to date.
Okay. There are some pieces, though, from Westboro that's not in ours.
So.
Oh, okay.
I confuse them too all the time.
So that, those were other options that we could look at and talk about, discuss. And there was one change that on the first page, they listed a series of sites such as Facebook linked video sharing sites such as YouTube bookmarking sites and Delicio or Delicios, and that has now, that no longer exists and has changed to Pinterest.
So if you go on the Westboro one, which is back to Lucy, like not reinventing the wheel, it's literally the same one, that they changed it to Pinterest versus that one that no longer exists.
That must have been quite a while ago. Pinterest has been around for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, it's been. Do you know that?
The non-technical guy knew that.
Just keep it a secret. Cat's out of the bag.
The other page, Lucy.
It was 19, it says we could add it to number 16. Appointed committee members found in violation of the policy may be subject to disciplinary action up to and including removal from committee appointments.
On 16.
But she's reading 19 from the Westboro one.
Okay. Yeah, I got you.
It was something that we don't have in ours, but it was in another one.
Right, no.
And there was another section that could be added onto number five. For the purposes of this paragraph, a municipal employee includes all persons performing services for or holding any elective or appointed office position or employment, either with or without compensation on a full, regular, part-time, intermittent, or consultant basis with limited exceptions set forth in General Law C 268A, paragraph one. Those are two things that I found, I thought kind of interesting that could be added. Think about it, see what you want to do or leave it up for discussion.
I have no problem adding that. No.
Okay.
And it's added to the same language from the other ones, it's just that in ours, those little, those couple sentences were left off, but it's the same policy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or amend it.
So is KP Law still going to review the change?
I would.
Oh, I would, too, any changes that we make.
Particularly on something like this.
I would, yeah. Yeah. Do we need a motion to look into that or draw up a new one? Yes?
Some more.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we take our social media policy with the addendums that Lucy read and add those in and up to town council for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. In the next one, senior center regionalization with Barry discussion. As mentioned way back in September 30th, we had gotten some calls as a result from Mr. Parkett visiting some senior centers and discussing regionalization with some of them. He went to, I believe it was Rutland, North Brookfield and Barry, not numbering Tree, though. You did not do that.
Well, they don't have a center.
Oh, they do, kind of. It's that, their big community room. But I know they do meet up there. And we had said that when we discovered that we had received phone calls from Barry and phone calls from North Brookfield. North Brookfield wanting to set up meetings. And we had said that we would be willing to do that as a matter of courtesy to those towns that were interested in thinking about the idea of merging. We did North Brookfield two meetings ago. And I have also gone to with Maribel to Barry. They requested that we go to the Barry Town Hall and they only wanted town manager and chair. And so that's what we did. We went there to discuss what they had done when they were planning their merger with Hardwick in this case. They told us about what the process was for them to do it because none of us, the other boards and councils have ever done a merger. So we got to see what the contract was like and it was a reasonable contract, there's an escape clause in it. So if you don't like it, you can leave at any time that you want to leave and there's no cost to it. There is a cost for us to join if we ever decide to do any mergers that we would be leaving our formula grant with them plus an added amount. Hardwick had to give 7,500. We were told that possibly we would be lower. But we said, that's something that we have to discuss in the future. We didn't really go too much into that because it's actually, we're looking at FY '26. We're not even looking for FY '25. We're looking for FY '26 and once we get all our numbers together to see what's the better thing for the town to do.
Is it population-based?
It is population-based, yes. Yes, it should be, it really should be. But they also did tell us that if OCAM ever did decide to join a merger with them, they would also have to contact Hardwick because Hardwick would have a vote as to whether or not we would be permitted to join. So we said that was fine, but now we have all the information coming into us from the senior center here, Council on Aging here, from North Brookfield and from Barry, the only ones that got back to us saying that they were interested. We never, we never heard back from Rutland. I don't know if it's just an overlook or they decided they didn't want to pursue anything. I don't know. We were already using some of their area for our Zumba classes.
They did. Construction project that they're looking at. It's going to include a senior center.
Oh, okay. Actually, aren't they kind of thinking about building another one over where the hospital used to be?
Yeah.
Interesting. Yeah.
They had the consultants come out and do the study on the town hall.
Yeah.
Whether to build new or whether to revamp the one they've got. And surprisingly, today's prices, the revamp is more than the new one.
Really?
I was completely surprised by that.
Because they just put in a whole brand-new kitchen area. And that was done with COVID money. So doing the rest of the renovation would still be more expensive.
Than building a new one.
Building a brand-new one.
Town hall.
Yeah. But would include.
About the same age.
Right, right. Interesting, very interesting. And at our last meeting, our Council on Aging did present a proposal to the Board of Selectmen that we took under consideration. So we're just looking and like we said, that we're not jumping into anything. And this truly has to do with FY '26 budget, not the one for this year. And then everything depends on the finances at the end of the year. Any new business from anybody? Yes, so.
Do you know anything about the RISE grant? Money, it's about $1,100. It may have come in in '23 solely to be used for opioid initiatives?
There is, there's an opioid.
Or spun.
Yeah.
And the reason I ask is, I guess Lester is going to go for another grant. It'll be regionalized and it's, you know, we have to pay a percentage.
I didn't know it was called RISE, so I would have to look. Yeah, maybe, maybe that. I would have to look, go back and look at my emails. Yeah, that kind of sounds familiar.
We haven't used the, like, the Board of Health hasn't used the money.
So that comes, I, I established that when I started just based on, you know, someone had contacted me for it. The Board of Selectmen signed and approved to do it, so I've been, you know, when they sent in a payment, it's usually from like CVS or, you know, at different pharmacies or I just deposited, we established a new account and I deposited into the opioid account, which you can only expenditure on certain things. I would have to go back and look at exactly what you can take that out on, but I mean, it's not like we've ever used it, it just, it's not like we get tons of money by any means, but.
I think whoever was, it was either Mackenzie or Megan who was here said it would have come in for about $1,100. It was like a lot, it must have been a lump sum.
Yeah, I'll look.
Okay, because we, I guess they're doing a new initiative and we have to pay a percentage of whatever we get for this grant. And we like, if we, since we haven't used that money, we like to put it towards this and then be able to use it because they want to do like a regional.
Yeah, it's, was that for Board of Health? Or is it just for the town?
As far as I know, it was supposed to come in for the Board of Health, but I have a feeling because it was in '23. I wasn't there, like, I don't know anything.
Yeah, I would have to go back and look or even ask the treasurer to see what we can come up with.
Yeah, that would be, because you can let us know, because if we don't, we don't have 1,100 in our budget to put towards this, so we just wouldn't put towards this initiative if we couldn't use that one.
And what, what does that, is it for a future grant?
Yeah. Instead of taking it like out of our order budget, if we had this money, which is solely for this opioid use that, then we could get more and actually do something with it.
It's the in-kind match.
Yeah. That's what it sounds like.
Eventually those that are allowed.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's fine. We'll just have the luck to see.
Double check.
Yeah, yeah, I'll look, okay.
Right, one other thing, I'm sorry, I didn't make it on the agenda, but and I think I have to run it by you, I don't know. So this year it came to our attention, I don't know why it didn't before, but that we don't have a one-day food permit. And it just came to our attention because the fire department wanted it.